Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. If I could ask members of council to take their seats. We'll begin the meeting in one minute. On va commencer la réunion dans une minute. Merci. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. If I could ask members of the public to take a seat, please. Welcome to the Ottawa City Council Meeting of the 10th of February 2016. For those who are able to, please rise for a moment of reflection and remain standing while we introduce our special guest will sing O Canada. Merci. I now ask councillor Leeper to introduce our special guests who are going to sing our national anthem.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you, colleagues, guests. As Napier High School is approaching its 95th anniversary, the music program is stronger than ever, enriching the lives of roughly 250 students from the school population and, as a result, the greater Ottawa community. More than 100 of those music students are singers in the school choirs. The choirs are strongly involved in the community, performing with the likes of the NAC Orchestra, the Youth Orchestra of the Netherlands, Dame Emma Kirby, Kenny Rogers, as well as other national, international, and local high school and community ensembles. Performing O Canada today is one of two of Napier High School's senior vocal music classes.
You can have a seat, but I've asked the choir with councillor Leeper, they've come in such great numbers, we want them to sing one more song for us. Today is the birthday of our city manager, Kent Kirkpatrick, so take it away.
Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday to you, Kent. Happy Birthday to you.
Well, thank you very much, Napier High School. Merci beaucoup et conseillère de Napier. At this time in our program, we'd like to invite Bruce Brayman to the podium to receive this meeting's City Builder Award presentation, along with his city councillor, councillor George DeRouze.
I'd also invite Bruce's councillors, George DeRouze.
A time resident of Ottawa, Bruce has always been an active volunteer. However, when Bruce moved his young family to Greeley in 2006, his level of involvement began to grow. Within months of moving to Greeley, Bruce joined the Greeley Community Association as secretary. Fast forward to the present, Bruce's president, rather, and Bruce has held several positions in the community association and has been acting president for the past five years.
Bruce has held several positions in the community association.
Has worked tirelessly to ensure the village of Greeley is a destination to retire, raise a family, or anywhere in between. Despite his full-time commitments as a financial advisor, Bruce still is still involved, his wife Linda and daughters Madison and Allison, very much in the community.
Despite his full-time commitments as a financial advisor, Bruce still involves himself, his wife Linda, and daughters Madison and Allison.
Leadership animates the Greeley Community Association year-round through organizing events like Greeley's Winter Carnival, Greeley's Canada Day festivities, coaching for the Ottawa South United Recreational Soccer Club. He also takes an active role in community support organizations, such as founding member of the Greeley Business Association, longtime member of the Greeley Community Association, and manages the local seniors' walking club. As a dedicated volunteer and leader in the community, Bruce's dedication has been instrumental in beautifying Greeley. He is also the driving force behind the Greeley Community Association's Gateway Project, a collaborative effort to build a community gateway structure which would serve to introduce Greeley's history and services to visitors. Thank you very, very much for your commitment to the community, and it's my pleasure on behalf of your councillor, George DeRouze, to present you with this Mayor City Builder Award. Congratulations, Bruce.
Thank you. I want to thank Mayor Watson and Ottawa City Council for this award, and George DeRouze. It's hard to believe this started eight years ago, going to a community association meeting just to see what was going on in my area, but this is where it ended up. I'd like to thank my mother, Leslie Brayman, for hopefully raising me right. I'd like to thank my wife and family, Linda, Allison, and Madison, for providing me the time and support to do this. And lastly, I'd just like to say to remember that volunteering in your community and your city really makes a difference. Thank you.
It gives me great pleasure to announce the presentation of the AODA Champion Awards to three outstanding Ottawa residents. This one-time award marks the 10th anniversary of the Accessibility for Ontarians with Disabilities Act, AODA, in 2015.
I am pleased to be here this morning to welcome you to this important event.
Of city council and senior management, I extend a warm welcome to all of our guests. The AODA Champion Award recognizes outstanding individuals who demonstrate passion and commitment in the promotion of awareness of accessibility and inclusiveness in their community. I'd like to thank the Association of Municipal Clerks and Treasurers of Ontario, AMCTO, for coordinating this important presentation and recognition. I'm very pleased to welcome Mr. Cal Palmerville, the past president of the association, who was here today to present the award, and I'd ask Cal to come up at this time, and thank you for joining us, Cal. I'm pleased to introduce our three honored guests this morning, who are the recipient of the distinguished AODA Champion Award, and I'd like to call them if they could come forward, please. Ms. Danielle Gravel, Human Resources Consultant, Collège La Cité; Ms. Christine Malone, Diversity Consultant, City of Ottawa; and Ms. Karen Coffey, AODA Advisor, Algonquin College. Welcome and congratulations. Thank you all for coming. Merci d'accepter notre invitation. These individuals are being honored for their leadership in promoting awareness of accessibility and for their dedication to inclusiveness. The Act, as many of you know, provides for the development of standards in order to achieve accessibility for Ontarians with disabilities.
This Act, as many of you know, provides for the development of standards in order to achieve accessibility for Ontarians with disabilities.
Has transformed the way we provide services to our residents, and it has transformed lives. Under the Act, private, public, and nonprofit organizations are required to identify, remove, and prevent barriers in order to make the province accessible for all persons with disabilities by the year 2025. It is comprehensive, the standards are with respect to everything from goods, services, facilities, and accommodation, to employment, building, structures, and premises. The AODA is important for Ottawa residents and for promoting inclusion.
The Act is important for Ottawa residents and for promoting inclusion.
Ottawa has a responsibility to be a role model on issues of inclusion and accessibility. We have worked diligently over the past 10 years, and I'm very proud of our many accomplishments. We want to make Ottawa the most successful capital city in the world and have a workforce that is representative of our community. The three champions before you have shown incredible dedication to this goal. It is my honor to acknowledge your important contributions, and I'd ask Mr. Palmerville to say a few words before we present the certificates and the plaques to our guests. Mr. Palmerville.
Thank you, your worship. AMCTO, with the support of the Government of Ontario, has recognized individuals who demonstrated leadership in accessibility and disability issues through the AODA 10th Anniversary Champion Award. This one-time award recognizes outstanding individuals whose passion and commitment has championed inclusiveness in their community. In 2015, AMCTO recognized nearly 100 individuals from every corner of the province for the work they have done in their local communities. All one needs to do is Google "AODA Champion Award," and you will see countless local media stories of exceptional individuals who have advanced accessibility awareness beyond the requirements of the AODA. Our individuals being recognized today are included in this group, and it is an appropriate honor that AMCTO can work with the City of Ottawa and Mayor Watson to promote the recognition of the contributions they have made towards accessibility and inclusivity in their local communities.
Congratulations. Merci, thank you. Our final presentation is on behalf of His Excellency, the Governor General of Canada, the Right Honorable David Johnson, and I'm honored to have the opportunity to present the Governor General's Certificate of Commendation. Today, we are joined by four of the six recipients being honored. I'm pleased to welcome Susan Jones, the Acting Deputy City Manager of City Operations, to come forward for the award. Sue? And I'd ask the following invited guests, honored guests, to come forward. Anthony Demonte, General Manager, Emergency and Protective Services; Mr. Rodney Hamburger, Paramedic Superintendent, Operations, Ottawa Paramedic Service; Mr. Adam Whiteford, Primary Care Paramedic, Ottawa Paramedic Service; and Monsieur Martin Margenot. Ms. Margaret Lair and Ms. Barbara Winters are unavailable to attend today's presentation. On behalf of the City of Ottawa, I extend my sincere thanks to these individuals in recognition of their actions and services.
On behalf of the City of Ottawa, I am pleased to recognize these individuals in recognition of their actions and services.
Governor General's Commendation Award are being recognized for the outstanding assistance they provided to Corporal Nathan Cirillo after he was shot at the National War Memorial on October 22, 2014. This was a horrible and tragic day etched in our minds and in the history of our country.
This was a tragic day etched in our minds and the history of our country.
Corporal Cirillo and to his family for their loss, and we solemnly recognize the selfless individuals who did everything in their power to save his life. We honor and thank our military, our security personnel, our police, our first responders who jumped into action on that day. We are indebted to six remarkable individuals who inspire us with their humanity and whose actions provide some comfort despite the tragic and senseless loss of Corporal Cirillo. The people who rushed to Corporal Nathan Cirillo's side at the National War Monument to try to keep him alive will be forever connected to that location and by their efforts that day. The Governor General approved the creation of the Certificate of Commendation in 1993 to be issued to those who have made a significant contribution by providing assistance to another person in a selfless manner. Recipients of the Certificate of Commendation, which is signed by the Governor General, are selected through a voting process. The six recipients may not see themselves as heroes, but their actions were indeed selfless and heroic in the face of danger as they struggled to save Corporal Cirillo's life.
These six recipients may not see themselves as heroes, but their actions were indeed selfless and heroic in the face of danger as they struggled to save Corporal Cirillo's life.
The Right Honorable David Johnson, it's my honor as mayor of the City of Ottawa to present these heroes on your behalf, the citizens of Ottawa, with a certificate of commendation, and we thank you for your bravery and your selfless service to others. Felicitations. A roll call, please, Madam Deputy Clerk.
Consulier Minette.
Present.
Councillor Middick. Councillor Harder.
Here.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Here.
Councillor Alshantiiri.
Present.
Councillor Cadri.
Present.
Councillor Taylor.
Here.
Councillor Shirelli.
Here.
Councillor Egway.
Here.
Councillor Deans.
Here.
Councillor Tierney.
Present.
Consulier Fleury.
You see.
Councillor Newspom.
Here.
Councillor McKenni.
Present.
Councillor Leeper.
Here.
Councillor Brockington.
Here.
Councillor Chernoshenko.
Present.
Consulier Clitier.
Present.
Consulier Blay.
Present.
Councillor DeRouze.
Here.
Councillor Moffett.
Here.
Councillor Kakish.
Present.
Councillor Hubley.
Here.
Mayor Watson.
You see.
You have quorum.
Beginning of January 27, 2016, carried. Declarations of interest, including those originally arising from prior meetings, declarations de conflits d'intérêt. Communications as presented, regrets, absence, councillor Middick advised he'd be absent from the city council meeting on February 10 due to city business. Motion to introduce reports, motion important presentation of report. Councillors, McKenni, second by councillor Brockington, please.
Thank you. That election compliance audit committee, report one, the report from the Ottawa Police Services Board entitled "Board Activity Training and Performance, 2015 Annual Report." Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee, report 12. Finance and Economic Development Committee, report 11. Planning Committee, report 20A. And Transportation Committee, report 11B. 11, sorry, be received and considered.
On the motion, carried. We have one postponement, a deferral from the last council meeting, Planning Committee, report 19A. Councillors Blay and Harder have worked with the proponent in the community and have come up with a satisfactory agreement. If councillor Blay would like to introduce his motion at this time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Therefore, be resolved that document two, details of recommended zoning of the report be amended to delete items F, G, and I, the result being that enlargement of the parking lot may occur prior to the construction of the proposed building, and be further resolved that there be no further notice pursuant to section 3417 of the Planning Act.
Okay, so on the amendment, carried. On the main report is amended, carried, thank you. Next is city council zoning bylaw amendment, that's the same item. Election Compliance Audit Committee, report number one, rapport numéro de comité de vérification de la conformité pour les élections municipales, received. Next is Ottawa Police Services Board, commission de services policiers d'Ataua, Board Activity Training and Performance, 2015, received. Committee report, rapport de comité, Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee, report number 12, rapport numéro 12 de comité de l'agriculture des affaires rurales. Item number four, traffic pedestrian and road safety enhancements, amélioration de la sécurité routière et piétons, received. Zoning bylaw amendment 5511, 5537 McCordick and 5510 Fourth Line Road, modification de zonage 5537 McCordick et 5510 Fourth Line, carried. Item number six, leave business improvement area, application for an exemption to bylaw to the Retail Business Holidays Act, application pour exemption de la loi sur les jours février.
Dissent.
Question, we'll come back to that. Application for approval to expropriate lands for the purpose of Richmond Force Main Project pursuant to section four of the Expropiations Act, carried. Land lease for 45 Ruskin Street to the Ottawa Hospital, location de terrain de 45 rue Ruskin à l'hôpital d'Ataua, campus civic, carried. Item number nine, from Planning Committee, zoning bylaw 151 and 153 Chapel Street, modification de règlement de zonage 53 rue Chapel.
I think we'll have to go back to this one.
Heritage Conservation District Plan, plan de district de conservation de patrimoine de New Edinburgh, carried. Item number 11, zoning bylaw amendment part of 8900 Jean-Dark Boulevard North, modification de règlement de zonage parti de 8900 Boulevard Jean-Dark Nord, carried. Zoning bylaw amendment 350 Spark Street and 137 Bay Street, modification de règlement de zonage 53 Spark et 137 rue Bay, carried.
Mayor, I did want to say a few words about this one.
Okay, we'll come back then. Rockcliffe Heritage Park Conservation District, we have a motion by councillor Newspom, so we'll come back to that. Transportation Committee, report number 11, comité de transport numéro 11, 2016 Parking Services Business Plan, plan opérationnel de 2016 des services de stationnement. Okay, we'll come back.
We carried a motion that the committee that's talking about the authority review, I just want to thank the members of the committee, this review will take place.
Airport parking directional signs, en direction à parc de stationnement de l'aéroport, carried. And does anyone wish to remove anything from the bulk consent agenda? On the bulk consent agenda is presented, carried, okay, thank you. So we'll head back to our first item. Leave business improvement area, application for an exemption, councillor Brockington had a question.
Thank you, your worship, and good morning. Just the first bullet talks about a request made by, I believe, councillor Hubley with respect to asking staff to look at opportunities for 2017, and staff agreed to pull the various BIAs in the city. My question is, how can businesses that are not part of BIAs who want to be part of the 2017 experience benefit from this? How will staff know how to tap into those businesses? We had a good example at Fedco, there was an owner of a small business who's not part of a BIA who would like to be part of this, so I'd like to make sure they're included. How will that be done?
Mr. Bashir, please.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Councillor, we will make sure that in addition to the BIAs, that we work with all the three chambers, as well as come to each of the councillors and identify any particular cluster of businesses that are not covered under a BIA geography.
Thank you. Councillor Hubley, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the actual direction the staff that was given was to consult with the BIAs, the Board of Trades, Chamber of Commerce, and the councillors to identify, I believe the term was where there was retail not covered by a BIA or Board of Trade or whatever. I see Mr. Bashir nodding his head. So it was to do the widest possible consultation in the city with the goal of reporting back by June so that if there is support for this in your area and others, we could move forward and try and designate the city for 2017 as a tourist designation and also as a pilot project on this initiative so that businesses can test it for a year and see if they want to go through the formal application process to extend it beyond that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, that's a good point of clarification, is councillor Hubley did move that to give other areas an opportunity on a pilot basis for 2017, so thank you for doing that. So on the report, carried, dissent by councillors Leeper, Brockington, and McKenni, and Blay, and Deans, and Shirelli, and Egway. Well, we just got the dissents recorded. Okay, the next item is councillor Fleury has directions to staff, this is item nine, zoning bylaw 151 and 153 Chapel Street.
Well, to start, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pursue the discussion we had at committee on the zoning has to do with what was approved for Uptown Rideau CDP, so I'd like to reflect these comments here at council. Of course, there are a lot of gains made with this project, be it the density transfer, which is one of the proposals, and there's also the private parks and the public park, various elements of section 37 that are approved that will various elements of section thirty-seven that are approved that will allow for improvements to bicycle pathways.
The item in front of us is going to the Ontario Municipal Board, and we're asked today to uh to look at the zoning portion of it. I have no issues, as I highlighted at committee, about zoning because it reflects the Uptown Rideau CDP goals, but there are two remaining issues. I'll start with the first one, which is the park. Uh we don't, we don't have a current policy, so as part of the application, we protected parkland out of the application, but we're not, uh, there's no strategy through DCs or through cash-in levies to, to implement the strategy. So the direction to staff in the following would be that I would request um a review of the urban park funding policy in advance of the next development charge review, as well as work with the applicant to find a solution to fund the park at this specific location. So there are ongoing discussions, I'm optimistic on that front, but it, this application has highlighted a gap in policy, and Mr. Mayor, I think staff are comfortable with that direction as well.
Great, and I thank the counselor and the chair of planning who met with me and our staff, and they're comfortable with this direction as well, because I believe some of that work is going to be done, in any event.
And there's a second direction, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
So for the second direction, it relates to a site plan issue that is coming forward. As part of the application, the um, the applicant is looking to open Boussoleys and Chapel Street, uh which is a big issue for, for our, it would open cut through along Chapel from, from Lower Town into San Yol and vice versa. I want to highlight that staff have come up with mitigation strategies for that. I remain opposed to the opening, I want to be clear on that. I am happy that staff are bringing forward the mitigation, but I want to make sure that we're coordinated in that approach and that we continue to see if the closure is an option as part of the, the discussion and debate for the OMB. So the direction to staff in that regards read as follows, I would like to propose, I would like, I would like staff to work with the applicant to try to find a solution that keeps this intersection closed, in the idea of not promoting the cut through both communities. If the maintained closure is not possible, that staff report back to council before the Ontario Municipal Board hearing on the details of mitig, uh, to detail the mitigation factors to eliminate cut through traffic from Boussoleys to Chapel.
Okay, so then that's understood.
Mr. Mayor, that is understood, we will, we will be back in, in front of council with any of the mitigation measures outlined in advance of the board hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just wanted to thank the Chair of Planning Committee for her collaboration and her work with me on, on this application, and staff as well, who, uh, we've looked at a series of options and really very comfortable with the zoning, site plan issues remain. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So on the report, carried. Uh the next item is item twelve that was held, zoning bylaw three-fifty Sparks and one-thirty-seven Bay Street, I believe Counselor Harder was going to speak to this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate you giving me a little bit of time. This is a very important development in our downtown, in the western part of our downtown, and I thought that it merited a few comments, and the, it is Morguard that is, that is the proposed developer at Sparks and Bay Streets, and it's a redevelopment of a whole city block in the heart of our downtown, and it's exactly the kind of smart development the city has been planning for and encouraging for the last decade. This site is literally steps from the Lion Station on the, on the O train, on the Confederation Line. The developer is proposing to demolish the vacant Closed National Hotel and a small apartment building, and Morguard would build a new hotel with three hundred and three rooms and a new apartment building with two hundred and fifty apartments, plus refurbish the office tower on the block and have some retail at ground level. That's a lot of residents, visitors, and office workers who will be able to use our new transit system very conveniently. This development will give new life to this western part of downtown and create new jobs for our city, and the redevelopment project at Sparks and Bay, which is especially important due to its size and prominent location, has been before the city's Urban Design Panel as well, four times since the fall of two thousand and fourteen. That review process has emphasized the importance of protecting the views of Parliament Hill and having new buildings that are modest, dignified, and respect the heritage buildings in the parliamentary district. The design review has also created better pedestrian links, a larger publicly accessible private open space measuring a hundred and twenty-two square meters, and the addition of street trees and seating along Spark Street. I'm pleased that this national company wants to build a major new development next to our light rail system, and I, I just wanted to take the opportunity to talk a bit about it. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. On the motion, carried, adopté, merci. Uh the next item also from planning, Rockcliffe Park Heritage Conservation Plan, Plan du District de Conservation de Patrimoine de Rockcliffe Park. Counselor Newsbaum has a motion, seconded by Counselor Harder. Counselor Newsbaum, please.
Um thank you very much, your worship. Yes, this item came to the Build Heritage Subcommittee in January. At that time, members of the community and of the subcommittee identified some remaining issues that they felt needed additional work, and we did a lot of the bulk of the work before Planning Committee, but there were some, still a couple of outstanding issues that initially I thought would have to come to council after the plan was adopted, but thanks to the cooperation of staff, we have found a way to address the concerns in a way that allows them to be dealt with this morning. So the motion does two things. First, it makes consistent some of the legal language around approvals, and the second thing it does is it emphasizes the value of the landscape of the HCD area through, through the addition of a guideline and the use of terminology in the body of the text that refers to properties as grade one and grade two, as opposed to contributing or non-contributing. And these terms are then defined in the guidelines so as to ensure there's clarity as to their meaning. So that's the purpose of this motion. I really want to thank staff who have worked very, very hard to help craft language that finds the sweet spot between language they can live with, that also addresses the concerns of residents and a couple of the citizen members of the BHSC without needing to make fundamental changes later. So that's the form of the introduction, and I think you will not want me to read through the whole motion, so I'll just put it before council as it is. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Counselor Leeper.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May I hear from staff just with respect to the legality of doing this? I'm, I'm sure that that has been carefully reviewed. An application to demolish is generally considered under the Heritage Act, which I don't think addresses appropriateness of the, the building that is going to replace it. How does this work under the statutory authorities that we have?
Mr. Mayor, the question is in relation to contributing and non-contributing buildings with demolition? Would that be correct, Counselor?
With respect to the bill, are, are judging whether or not something can be demolished on the basis that what is going to replace it is appropriate? Is that actually a criteria that we can bring to an application for demolition?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hubley, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On our last point, uh, Miss Steadman, I believe when we dealt with the Bradley Byrne issue, we asked for a report to be brought back or for heritage people to, to look at that and, and provide us better guidelines on how to handle these requests for demolitions and, and when it's appropriate to move or replace. So I assume that's all going to be one report, would that be a safe assumption?
We, Mr. Mayor, we will be bringing back further details and information to clarify, Counselor, your motion at Planning Committee and at AREC.
Thank you. Now, another question on this application is, in particular, the part, let's see here, it says, I think it's number thirteen, under section seven point three point three, driveways, landscaping features, lighting guidelines, they want to replace that subsection with modern equipment, utility boxes, air conditioning units, and satellite dishes as examples, shall be located in a manner that is discreet and not visible from the street, screened with strategically located plant material. Who is going to cover the cost of that? And I'd like to have that answer reflected in this document before it's approved.
Mr. Mayor, that is the responsibility of the property owner.
Okay. So is it possible, would it be a friendly amendment to the document, Counselor Newsbaum's document, to specify that in this document, that the homeowners and not the city taxpayers are on the hook for the costs of the screening material and any locations of utility boxes, et cetera?
Counselor Newsbaum, you're okay with that? So we'll add that in, Deputy Clerk.
I'm sure on behalf of Rogers and Bell, they really appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, anything else? It's great, Brian, the president of the Rockcliffe Park Residents Association with us to see this, thank you for your input and your association's contributions, appreciate it. So on the report, on the amendment, rather, carried, on the report is amended, carried, thank you. Disposition of items approved by committees under related authority, suite à donner des articles ratifiés par les Comités en vertu de pouvoir délégués, received. Motion to adopt reports, Mauceau important adoption de rapport, Counselor McKenney, seconded by Counselor Brockington, please.
Thank you, that election compliance audit committee, report one, the report from the Ottawa Police Services Board entitled Board Activity Training and Performance, twenty fifteen annual report, Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee, report twelve, Finance and Economic Development Committee, report eleven, Planning Committee, report twenty A, and Transportation Committee, report eleven, be received and adopted as amended.
Carried. Uh motions of which have, notice has been given previously, Mauceau dont avait été donné entièrement, Counselor McKenney on Glowfair, seconded by Counselor Cloutier, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas the Bank Street Business Improvement Area will host the annual Glowfair Music Light Art Event, and whereas many of the Glowfair activities will be happening outdoors on Bank Street and Gloucester Street, including a main stage for performances, and whereas the BIA has requested the closure of Bank Street from Slater to James Street and Gloucester from O'Connor Street to Bank Street from one P M. on Friday, June seventeenth, to six A M. on Sunday, June nineteenth, twenty sixteen, to increase the safety and security of the area, and whereas the City of Ottawa's Special Events on Roads bylaw prohibits road closures before six P M. Monday to Friday, therefore be it resolved that council approve the road closure from Bank Street, for Bank Street from Slater to James and Gloucester Street from O'Connor to Bank from one P M. on Friday, June seventeenth, to six A M. on Sunday, June nineteenth, for the Glowfair Music Light Art Event, providing it meets the requirements, conditions, and approval for Special Events Advisory Team.
So on this motion, Counselor Harder.
Thank you, just have a question, Mr. Mayor, and you know, Bank Street is a significant arterial in our city, and I'm wondering what other events in that may be happening around the same time, and wondering the position of OC Transpo, if they feel that this is manageable for them? Have, I'm, have they been approached at this point?
Counselor, I'm sure you've discussed this with OC, we did it last year.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is, this is the third year, as a matter of fact, and OC Transpo has been very much involved.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Counselors, Conseil Manette, s'il vous plaît.
On the same train of thought as Counselor Harder, we do not have the schedule yet for the CFL games closing on Bank Street. Bank Street is a main arterial that is used for transportation. Will that be looked at if there is a conflict during, during that timeframe?
Ms. Jones.
Uh yes, through the mayor, certainly with our Special Event Advisory Team. This event is further up Bank Street, but we certainly look at all, all the events that are going on in the city to ensure we're not compromising traffic and that we can ensure that people can get to the game.
Thank you.
Merci, thank you. On the motion, carried, adopté. Uh the next motion is moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Fleury. This is a requirement to bid on the Grey Cup for twenty seventeen, which is a great event for our city if we're successful. On the motion, carried, well, Counselor Newsbaum.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I think it could be a very exciting addition to the city to have the Grey Cup here in twenty seventeen. I just had a, a question with regard to the costs. There is mention of the Ottawa Police Service supporting the event and for the five-day festival surrounding the game. Do we have any sense from the police services to what the cost of that is going to be? Sorry? No, I'm just asking if we have a sense of the cost from the police services for providing the services and any of the other costs associated with this, just so that we have a sense of what we expect the burden on the police budget and our budget to be. Thank you.
Uh we do, these are funds, the reason this motion is here is, one, it's required by the CFL, but secondly, it's committing to a future budget year, but these are dollars that are included in the Major Events Fund that's been approved by council, along with the twenty seventeen funding that's already been approved by council. So this is not a request for funds from the city, those costs will be absorbed by the twenty seventeen in the Major Events Office at Tourism Ottawa. Counselor Leeper, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to, with respect to the transit in return for tickets, where people will have a, a ticket to the event and get free OC Transpo, we've directed, obviously, OC Transpo to come back with a report, with a policy on, on how that's going to work in future. Is the proposal in this motion, does it mean that we will be recovering the full cost, the full incremental cost of the additional OC Transpo service that would be required? Or is this going to be part of the existing contract with, with OSEG? I would imagine it would have significant incremental costs compared to a regular CFL season, for instance. Are we proposing to capture the costs that are incremental?
Uh yes, in addition to that, there will be a shuttle service that will be paid for by the funds from the Major Events Office in, in twenty seventeen as well.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
On the motion, carried, adopté, merci. Uh motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure, Mauceau exigeant la suspension des règles de procédure, we've received none to date. Notices of motion for consideration at subsequent meeting, avis de motion pour examiner réunion subsuequente, Counselor Deans, please, seconded by Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, whereas in nineteen-ten, women delegates from around the world met in Copenhagen to propose that Women's Day become an international event to promote equal rights for women, whereas the first International Women's Day was held in nineteen-eleven, and whereas in nineteen-seventy-seven, the United Nations officially called for all countries to mark a day for the recognition of women's economic, political, and social achievements, whereas the year twenty-sixteen marks the hundredth anniversary of the first woman in Canada winning the right to vote, and whereas every year thousands of events are held around the world to inspire, celebrate, and honor women, therefore be it resolved that Ottawa City Council declare March eighth, twenty-sixteen to be International Women's Day in the City of Ottawa, and that's a notice of motion.
Okay, so we'll deal with that at the next meeting. The next notice of motion I have is moved by Counselor Egli, seconded by Conseil Fleury. Counselor Egli, if you'd like to introduce your notice of motion, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is, this is a motion dealing with the Streetside Spots Pilot Project that's, that's coming up, and while staff still has a bit of tweaking to do with the existing wording you're seeing on the screen, the idea is to make sure that the, the cost of the street side spots is the same as the costs of the patio fees, to make them, make them consistent across the board.
Okay, so we'll deal with that at our next meeting. Our finally, final notice of motion that I have is moved by Counselor Leeper, seconded by Counselor Deans. Counselor Leeper, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The wording of the motion is on your screen. Last summer, the Canadian Radio Television and Telecommunications Commission made a ruling that would force large telecom providers to make their networks available to smaller companies. That's the arrangement under which companies like TechSavvy have been able to offer internet services for the, the past many years. As we move into an entirely fiber optic paradigm, so fiber to the home, fiber to the premises, the CRTC rule would continue that regime. That has been appealed to the federal government by one of the providers that is involved. Other municipalities, including in a very substantial submission, Calgary and also Toronto, have expressed their support for the CRTC's position. I know our residents are looking to the municipality for leadership on broadband issues, particularly as Ottawa seeks to become a, a smart city, so I am bringing a motion to the next council meeting that would essentially support the CRTC's position in favor of making fiber optic networks available to small providers.
Okay, thank you. Uh motion introduce bylaws, Mauceau important presentation de règlement, Counselor McKenney, please.
Thank you, that the bylaws listed on the agenda under motion to introduce bylaws, first and second readings be read, and three readings be read and passed.
Carried, adopté, confirmation bylaw. Confirmation bylaw, councillor McKenney, please, seconded by councillor Brockington.
Thank you. The following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting of the 10th of February 2016.
Carried. We received any written inquiries, madam deputy clerk. Adjournment, councillor McKenney.
Yes, that the proceedings of the city council meeting of the 10th of February 2016 be adjourned.
Adoptée, carried. Thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.